Okay, the hour of six o'clock having arrived. Let's call the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
He's got an excused absence.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Yes. So that is six members of the Village Board present. The court being established will proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda. For the record, the agenda's been posted forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting and of course with the Open Meetings Act. I'm going to read into the record. Today's Tuesday, June 2nd of 2020. We're at the Village Hall 401 St. John's Drive in Sherman, Illinois. Time is six o'clock, it's a regular meeting. That moves us along in the agenda to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I could ask everybody to stand and face the flag. Chief Baker, if you could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. We need to set the agenda. Agenda's been posted. We have no action items added to it unless it's an emergency purpose, which we do not have anything to say at this time. So that being said, the Chair would entertain a motion to set the agenda, motion to the effect. Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Long, long in favor, submitted by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, the ayes have it, the agenda is set. Item number one, under the Clerk's report, make the presentation of the May 5th, 2020 meeting minutes. They're presented for approval. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Trustee Tim makes a motion to approve the May 5th, 2020 meeting minutes. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Schultz. Trustee Schultz. Clerk call the roll.
Glad I'm wearing a mask, huh?
You better change your mask.
Clerk.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Five members voting yes and none voting no, the minutes are adopted. It will be added to the Village Board's agenda. Presentation of the May 5th, 2020 executive session minutes. Those cannot be discussed, but we need to approve those. So I don't think there's any discussion regarding them to where we'd have to go to the Executive Church or anything like that. So everybody comfortable with approving them? We need a motion, motion by Trustee Tim, seconded by Trustee Rockford. Clerk call the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Five members voting yes and none voting no, the minutes are adopted. Presentation of the bills for approval. Bills have been presented in your board member bracket. Any questions regarding the bills?
I have one question.
What is RKPR solution? Well, that's the last invoice for Ryan Heath, the Public Relations.
Yep.
End of digital. Any other questions? Okay, we need a motion to approve the bills. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Schultz. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Five members voting yes and none voting no, those are approved payments. Moving along, there is no treasurer's report this evening. Takes us to the engineer's report. This is his night off. And we need him for this meeting. So anybody have any questions regarding engineering? I guess I would let you know, to the extent that you do not know, that when the Mere Drive was in Crown Point subdivision was repaved, they milled it up on Thursday and laid it down on Friday. So I believe, I already had compliments from residents in that area that are happy.
I noticed it, by the way.
Trustee, the driver.
I noticed it too.
Yep, she reached out, she said that she was appreciative and smooth and nice.
He said Crown Point.
I already told you about the bike trail and the bridge stuff last meeting. I guess I'll cover it in, under my report regarding some stop signs, more visible stop signs. I just wanted to just brief you on about what we need to do. But we'll do that here in a second. I don't think, you may have anything on your engineering? Nothing?
Could I add just a couple things?
Absolutely.
There are about four or five different grant opportunities that are available to the Village from the state of Illinois to federal government. A lot of them have to do with infrastructure grants. So we're going to be taking a little aggressive approach and actually applying for every project that we have now existing, both anything from road projects to park projects, development projects, new development, any economic development thing we may be looking at, pretty big acquisitions and other things. We're putting together the entire package right now. It is very cumbersome to put together, obviously. But it's millions and millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars actually, that's available to municipalities, but we're going to be competing with a lot of people in state of Illinois. So we make it twenty percent.
We're going to have a dozen of these. We're going to have one cap car for the end of the year.
Anyway, just want to let everybody know, we'll move forward on those.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's go to legal. Anything under legal?
Nope.
Nothing. The Village Administrator, Economic Development.
Nope. Nothing.
Okay, brings us to the President's Report. The first item listed is item number one, a resolution regarding the placement of stop signs at the intersections of Red Bud Run and Old Tipton School Road, and also at St. John's Drive and Old Tipton School Road. Here is some background and what we're thinking and what we'd like to have approval for. The Village Code, our ordinances stipulate that the Board determines where a stop sign will go in or not go in essentially. We are recommending, based on traffic patterns, speed of travel, resident complaints, resident concerns, resident issues that have been forwarded to us, a petition that's been circulated, and then also formal conversations with people in the area. That stop signs specifically be placed at the intersection of Red Bud Run and Old Tipton School Road. The addition of the newly paved Old Tipton School Road that we did, what, a year and a half ago, two years ago? Has led to much smoother traveling, but also much smoother traveling, a higher rate of speed. So that's always been a concern on that road, when it was kind of hunky and nasty road. Somewhat regulated the traffic in some respects, but not even at that, I don't think it ever has. Outside of stationing a cop in that area, which we're not going to do, we don't have the manpower to do, put them over there all the time. We think that we can slow the traffic in that area with a stop sign. Also, you would see that the playground system that has went in at Village Park, it would be in everybody's best interest to also have slower speeds of travel going through there. While we are going to put, and we've always had it in the plans, we're going to fence that area, and also we talked about a guardrail, but the guardrail won't be, it would kind of be unsightly, even if we painted it nice decorative black to meet and match the column fluted poles. What we're thinking is putting in bollards. And if I were to give you a frame of reference to visualize, think about like at the State Capitol, where you got the concrete post in the ground with the decorative sleeve over the top of it. Then we're also going to place the large bollards that are down at the other end of the park, those huge ones that match everything underneath the underpass to Meredith Drive and also our Rock Fountain. We have to get a huge, basically picking machine, and the operating engineer, he can get his way to do that for us for nothing, and haul them down there and place them as decorative outcroppings, but also serve a functional purpose of, you know, you'd have to go through a lot of stuff in order to end up in a bad, in a place we don't want anybody to end up in. But we have to protect against that. We've had some incidences where cars have been on the path. We've got a car most recently go into the amphitheater fleeing and abating a police officer. So anything can happen, and we just try to think outside the box of what can happen. I think taking these measures just mitigates and minimizes anything that could possibly happen in that area. So we would like to slow the traffic on that road, and so would a lot of the residents along there. I've talked to numerous ones, we have a petition that started circulating. Is it in this packet?
No, I don't think it is.
But anyway.
It was made when I was last month, I think.
Yeah, so they had, what's that?
It was made when I was last month because we had it canceled in nineteen.
Yeah, so anyway, we had, and I've had some normal conversations with people that live in that area. People that back up to that, you know, a name that we know, Ryan Mullins, he just moved over in that area, just talking to him the other day. He's fully supportive of it, thinks it needs to be done. Mrs. Dessine, she circulated the petition. Mrs. Baraski, those are names that immediately come to mind. So that being said, you have the support of the citizens along that road, you have the support of the engineer who's not here this evening that would basically say it's under your purview, it's a village road, and the Village Code allows the Board to actually put those in. We would want to make it a basically a somewhat higher visibility intersection, so, and we got to mark it good because it's going to be a change. If there's a lot of traffic, it also circumvents Business 55 and takes that road too, truck traffic and things along those lines. So there's a multitude of reasons to do this, not many to not do it. And we'll have a path along there in the future as well. The fact that we don't have a path just yet has had individuals either walking in the grass, or riding in the grass, which is what we want right now, or looking for the smoother surface and being on that road, which puts them in a more soft situation as they are close to those cars, and the fact that those cars are traveling a little bit faster is another reason to do this. So that being said, I'm going to open it up for discussion. You may get some blowback from some people regarding this, but every decision you make, leaders lead, I always say that, and you're going to not make everybody happy, but in the end, you're going to have more people happy than not. And it would be, you know, the situations and issues where something doesn't happen that you don't know of, you know, is good enough for me, and I think all of us. So any discussion regarding this? What we talked about is immediately sticking in the stop signs at Red Bud and Old Tip, starting there and seeing how that goes. But we wanted to get approval this evening to potentially, since it's on the, it's just on the docket and in the mix, to get approval to do St. John's and Old Tip as well. Now, at this time, I don't think we need to stop them at Flagland intersection down here just yet, but that could be something, but that road needs to somewhat become more of a subdivision street because over the years I have had numerous complaints. I know Krista, when she was on this board, she had issues, and she thought I still would, and they'll probably ask for a stop sign down there. Mrs. Frank Carey and Joy Franks, there's been a lot of people who've raised concerns over the years, you know, and even not liking along this as well. But right now, we think we can put this one in right there based on the information that we have and what's happening up at the park, and just the grander scheme of the bigger plan, so.
You said that they were going to have.
What we'd like to do is get, yeah, and that's going to lead me into some of these other intersections that I'd like to talk to you about.
Like originally or forever?
What?
Their life.
So you've seen the stop light or the stop signs in a lot, they cost a little bit more, but they're worth it. A lot of them are solar powered, and they have the LED little dots around the outer perimeter of it, makes it more visible. And it's solar powered, so we'd like to install those, maybe even add a decorative post on it so it looks nicer than the ported tubular steel. But we'll do the pricing and stuff on that. But that's what we'd like to do. There's the option potentially of also putting the reflective, I don't know what they are, fourteen, eighteen inch stop bars that stick to the ground that would mark the intersection even better. You know, they go halfway to the road, halfway there, defines the intersection a lot better. That's what I would like to do for some of these other major intersections that we've had, residents that live right next to these locations, and I'll name them really fast since we're on the topic. First Street and Partridge Pass, where we put that stop sign in. People still tend to move on through that.
Yeah.
If we put stop, the reflective sticker, stop bars down, and the LED flashing lit stop signs, that'll mark that more prevalent. Lost Tree and Meredith, get cooking, you want to go around all the way to Zimmerman? That's been an issue, the Christines have talked to me about that, several other people in that area. And then the top of the road at Birch Lake and Pine Drive, Mr. Phil Fons, you know, Bill's a, you know, drives a bus for the school, he's got grandkids, he just contacted me the other night, watched a white truck bolt into the stop sign, it gets you a camper trailer. So he's asked me about it. I'd like to move forward on that, and getting several of these LED lit stop signs and.
You're looking at those.
Yeah, and get moving on addressing stop signs. So we'll do these, and then we'll do those otherwise. We'll get to Julie, the public works, we'll make it a day or two days of literally going out and establishing these intersections. And, you know, you got to get the heat going, I think, and put the stop bar down and get the stick to.
Isn't it like a?
No, 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 it's just a, no, it's just, I mean, it's just the white reflective stop bars that are on the road, these drive right. So.
I just feel if this gets approved tonight, that over there since it's traveling so fast, and you're going to need a new sign, you're going to need something.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, that's what you do.
Because then you're going to have accidents.
Or even like in the, I mean, I don't know, sometimes you see.
No, anytime, anytime we put a new intersection in, we will announce it through various different mediums, and also you will put, you put, yes, you put flags on it, very visible flags. And so we'll definitely try to make that one. And then we can even post an officer in the area, this has been helpful, this is what we do, put an officer over there so that you get the visibility of the officer there. It's not about writing tickets right off, these people won't, they not notice it, but they will notice it, you know, a stop sign and a white car sitting there. And that'll work as well. Yeah, that'll do.
I think the flags are good though, because that.
Yeah, they'll be high visibility.
It is, absolutely, yeah, absolutely is, yeah.
And I agree, because that's where I got my first, when I was sixteen, so I'm all about it.
There's an easy tendency, no matter how good of a driver you are on Old Tip, especially now, with it being very smooth and wide open to keep going over thirty-five mile an hour. Easy.
We've been on Red Bud for ten years, and I've seen a major uptick in these kids. Just today, a little boy who's about eight, he was riding a bike like this, wasn't even watching, and he's going over to Flagland to see his friends from our subdivision. I mean, they're always going at the course now, where ten years ago, there was not much going on.
Right.
So, I mean, it's totally justified now.
And Old Tip in Estates is getting younger, like a lot younger.
Right.
There are lots and lots of young kids on bicycles that are living in that area.
Yes, and they go to Flag.
Trustee Gray said, I've got friends here in Flagland, and that's not that bad of a ride, you know, for them to just shoot across there. So we need to, we need to slow them down on that road, do our job to like make sure that we've put in certain measures to prevent as best we can any accidents. And like you said, the people that are just kind of circumventing lighted intersections and stuff like that, using this road, it's going to happen as well. And I have to talk to Chief about this. We talked about putting a stop sign potentially at Zebrin Road intersection, it's right on the curve though, I think it'd be a little tricky, I drove it a couple times, and, you know, it was like, where do we space these out right now? And most of the individuals that we've heard from, you know, here and now is the Old Tipton Estates people, so.
And we'll get the kids from Old Tipton to Flagland if we do.
Yeah, right.
You know, if they get someone's brain, or an older person.
And the stretch from Old Tipton Estates to Flagland intersection is not that short of a distance. I mean, when you drive it, it's really not. So it's not like you're going, stop, go stop, and then go. It's actually a good, it's spread out fairly.
Probably a lot of traffic.
For me, yeah, yeah.
They just think they'll have.
Until we do this, and then they may take the other route because they're, and that's where we want them, out on those foaming roads and, you know, divided, divided roads. So we'll try and do, take all these measures to control the traffic pattern to where we want it, and it's been engineered to be. Any further discussion, thoughts? Everybody in support, I hope, yes? Comfortable moving forward?
So you're just going to do Old Tipton or?
We'd like, we'd get approval to do both of them.
Right.
And look forward it to happen. Go under the assumption that we're just doing, we're doing both of them. And I always think, the more that I've talked about it now with you all, that we should just do it.
Because if you start one, I think we should start both.
Yes.
Like you don't want to start one and then start.
And pop another one up.
Just put it out there all at the same time.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the more we deliberate and kind of work through this, it sounds like, I think we should just do it, so.
I agree.
Okay. Sounds like there's support, so I would, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the placement of stop signs at the intersections of Red Bud Run and Old Tipton School Road and St. John's Drive and Old Tipton School Road. It's Resolution 2020-02, a resolution providing for the location of additional stop signs in the Village of Sherman. As I told you, this is, whereas Title VII, Chapter One, Section One, dash one, five of the Village Code provides that the Village Board of Trustees may designate certain streets as stop streets, and that said signs shall be posted at the public locations indicating said stop streets. I'm not going to read the rest of it, but that's, that's what the motion is going to entail. Is there a motion to do such? Trustee Rockford makes that motion, seconded by Trustee Gray. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll on this resolution?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
I will, I'll vote on, I'll vote yes as well. If six members might yes, not voting no, the resolution will be adopted. Next is an ordinance. An ordinance modifying the sunset provisions of Village Code and Liquor Code on video gaming to sunset and be revealed effective July 1st, 2021, unless reauthorized by the corporate authorities of the Village of Sherman. I don't really need to go into this very much. This is our gaming. We're just giving it, we're reauthorizing it one more year. Done this every year since gaming started, so. Motion to allow gaming for another year will be motioned by Trustee Tim, seconded by Trustee Long, and Clerk would please call a roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
That is five members voting yes, none voting no.
The sort of question that, it's just gaming related.
Yep.
When do you think the gaming machines will be turned back on?
They're not even back to work yet, I have like.
I'm just curious.
I do not know. I mean, I think we're going to move into Phase Four on July 1st, is what I'm hearing. But outside of that, I should be from the head.
I was just curious because with the exception of restaurants, which are almost open, gaming facilities, I mean, there's only five machines up there.
Six now.
Six, yes. I think it comes in phase.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, just because of the practical problems and people not working at, might get some dealings. Trevor, I was curious.
Now, just to let everybody also know, I'll be sitting down with the license renewals this year, but one of the things that Trevor wanted to do is also, instead of just putting it all at one time on the establishments, we allow them to pay half of it down. Rate doesn't change, but half of it down and half of it six months into the, into the new year. I've talked to some of them that are excited about that and appreciate it. So we still collect a full amount to just break it up for them. So when they start earning again, they'll be.
Yeah.
Those are, yeah, I understand.
Good job, Trevor.
But I can't. No, we've been trying to, we've been trying to stay in touch with the business owners and talk to them about, you know, what's going on and their needs and the pressures that they're facing, and that's one of the things that we thought, you know, we could also assist in mitigating and minimizing the impact of, you know, the full fee all at once on the actual establishment. So we're going to allow them to pay half and half. Okay? Item number three, so that was, that prevailed five to zero. Item number three is an ordinance adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment.
Mandated by state law.
Mandated by state law. You have to pass it.
You have, you have to pass it, and you, and all employees have to receive social training program. That amounts to a link to a, to a program that they approve.
So we, because I know Pam and I, like I've already done like through this, you know, same.
It's part of that line.
Yeah. Like we're all required to do it, as you said. Is it just a certificate, we just kind of provide?
Yes.
Like mine, okay, I can do that.
Okay, so that is the board packet.
We're looking that up.
Yes.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt a policy prohibiting sexual harassment. Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Schultz. Clerk call the roll, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Five members voting yes, none voting no, that measure prevails. Committee and Department reports, anything under Committee and Department reports? Sherman Police Department, Chief Baker. Anything to report? Nothing. Sherman Emergency Management Agency, Mr. Michael Moes.
Not really much. It's been a while since I've been to a meeting. We've been pretty active with the police department, fire department with COVID and civil unrest type of issues, and keeping in touch with one another, so I don't have anything else.
Okay. Yeah, Mike was very active during the, it's not like it's over with, but it seems like it's kind of over with. I'm happy about that. But the COVID stuff, I know the task force or the incident command team has kind of wound down all of their meetings. Going to meet on a as needed basis, but you were working with the Red Cross and the teams down there, so we were coordinating with the Fire Department, Chief Masterham was a part of that, that team, so, yeah, things went well, and thanks for everything that you did regarding that. And then Mike and I, sorry, Director Moes and I have constant communications during all of these storms. I'm calling him frequently. You got eyes on this, you got ears on this? And so he's briefing me, and he's there to open up the EOC when needed, to sell the tornado sirens, we need to have constant communication with our police department and then the other surrounding agencies, so that's a nice comfort to have as well. So thanks for all your help on that, Director Moes. Public Works, Director Newton has the evening off, Bruce asked me as well about being here, said take the evening off, enjoy the weather. Brings us to new business, of which we have no new business listed, there is no old business listed, anybody have any old business? So that, we have no civic organizations listed on the agenda. It's going to bring us to the public comment period. Nobody has signed in to address the board, so I'm going to let Administrator Stratten. There is no executive session this evening. Anything, anybody have anything, we're all together, convened.
Anything on the part of like any events, like what are we doing with all that?
Interesting, you should ask. We canceled everything for June.
Okay, I see that.
We had nineteen shows booked for this year. Everything for the end of May and June have been canceled. As it stands right now, we have everything on the books for July. And we're going to work through, we'll be having meetings.
Yes, so it's like, yeah, I mean, yeah, I didn't know. Totally were with that stuff.
Now, I think everybody here has seen or heard that I said in terms of my Facebook and post and announcement, that we are going to have fireworks in the Village of Sherman. I think we do, too. It's, we're gonna do it. So, that being said, there's a lot of places that aren't, and I think there's gonna be an influx of individuals that come out this way. So, without announcing anything right now, it's still, and I put it out publicly, and answered questions on my Facebook post regarding this, so there, and I talked to some people that live in the area where we've traditionally and typically hosted them. But, taking into a whole, taking into account a whole bunch of considerations, the fact that we're gonna continue and move forward with our show, the fact that we still need to be not on the extremes of COVID doesn't exist, and not on the extremes of you can't touch anything and you're gonna die. So, the reasonable area is somewhere in the middle. And so, maintaining and practicing decent social distancing and things along those lines is what we should consider. And then, like I said, the amount of places, and I've, I've said it publicly on the radio, that I think some of these other mayors and councils should reconsider whether they're having their fireworks show that they've already canceled, and that they canceled like a month and a half, two months out. Because you can always adapt on a fly, and, you know, if something happened, we could cancel it. At the moment, we're not, we're not, we are having that show. We're gonna honor everything that July 4th and Independence Day stands for. And so, we've had some meetings, chief and I, deputy chief, administrator of straddle, we've talked about the fireworks company that we use, Larry Lefters, Central States Fireworks, and have thought of some contingency plans, some contingency areas to shoot these fireworks that would accommodate a much larger amount of people driving their cars and be able to see them. And that would take into consideration parking lots and just places along here. And so, like I said, without announcing anything right now, one of the locations we've talked about is our new premier village park facility. And if you think about it, you know, it's time, we'd be packing cars in to that area down there pretty tightly. And to try and limit it to, you know, Sherman people first off, that would be a nightmare. To try and tell other people that, you know, they're not allowed in there, that would be a nightmare. So, how do we try and make this special and good for lots of different people, and even people? Because I've literally been contacted by other mayors, other trustees, aldermen from other towns, you know, with accolades and saying, "Good for you, we canceled," you know, and then people saying that they're coming out this way. So, taking that into consideration, that we need to take that into account. It's a nightmare down there, under the normal circumstances for the police department, and it's all hands on deck, we literally have to bring in every single officer except for one that's gotta work the next day, essentially. So, they, they put them in there pretty tight, there's only one entrance in and out. The fire department isn't the most excited about that location, I, you know, in terms of emergencies and things that could happen or whatever. And the location that we're talking about will give a lot of other subdivisions the opportunity to even see the low stuff that you typically can't see. Now, while that is an unbelievable sight to see the fireworks, the way it illuminates the pond, and it allows us to shoot off five inch shells, we found a location where we can continue to have the same fireworks display with the same size diameter shells, because you have to have a certain amount of clearance for every, for every one inch shell that you have, you have to have seventy feet of clearance. And so, when we shot in that county, by County Market, that one year when it was flooded out, with County Market being there where they could place that before the animal clinic, before Prairie Haven, was there, the largest shell that we could get was a three inch shell. And it was a good shell, it was a really good shell. And it was easy to do traffic control. Remember, when we did it, we didn't even bring in any extra guys for overtime at the police department, because the natural infrastructure of Sherman, the traffic signals, Route 66 Park, County Market parking lot, the bank parking lot, everywhere accommodated it very easily, and everybody could see it. But the site that we have, and the location that we have located, now I gotta get some approvals still in this, that's why I'm not making an announcement. Because I gotta get some clearances from other entities that, you know, are not doing this. But, we have a spot where we can still have the same fireworks diameter shells, put on a heck of a show, if we do that. So, that's what we're working towards right now, but that could come, that could come out in the near future, so look for that, potentially.
There was eight minutes left.
I'm very detailed.
You're keeping track.
All right.
Well, there's probably two things we need to mention, just off the bat. We still, we have entered May 1, which is our new fiscal year. We hope to have a budget, a proposed budget to the board here within not too distant future. We have been working on that, we've been waiting for numbers to come back on the impact that the COVID is gonna have on all of our numbers, because it will have an impact on our revenue streams in particular. And so, we're gonna have to really kind of sharpen our pencils associated with both those revenue impacts we'll have on our expense side. So, we're working hard to get those things done. Second thing is the audit for the fiscal year 20. I think we're waiting for one signature, and then once that's done, they're gonna go through their regular schedule. We have asked that that audit be completed and ready for, to present to the board by the October board meeting, so we can meet all of our deadlines for filing, which begin October 30th of that year, including different boards, including state comptroller reports for the budget and the audit. So, just a, just a heads up on that, we're still moving forward, we haven't gotten by any of those very important items.
All right, everybody ready to get out of here? Six thirty-nine, there's no further business coming to the board. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn, is there a motion in effect? Trustee Rockford makes a motion, for a second, seconded by Trustee Gray, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to you guys having it, the board is adjourned at six thirty-nine. Thank you, everyone.